To long term. And not only are we committing to it long term, we need to have the plan on how are we going to pay for it? Because you've got the price tag, but then how are you going to pay for that price tag? And as I mentioned earlier, what's listed here is a price tag of $53 million with us saying we're going to bring $29 million to the table. And those numbers don't match up to me. And so I think. Again, I need the FIR that's a little more refined before I'm able to support this. With that, no other comments or questions, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other comments or questions from members of the committee at this time? And if not, what are the wishes of the committee?
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Can I please get a roll call? Counselor Amanda Chavez?
Yes.
Counselor Lee Garcia.
I'm abstaining just based on the conversation that just occurred. Thank you.
Counselor Michael Garcia.
Abstaining.
Counselor Renee Villarreal.
Yes.
Counselor or Chair Cassett.
Yes.
Motion passed. Thank you so much. Okay, so we have completed the, thank you staff for being here. We've completed consent agenda. We are moving on to our action item. So this is a consideration of a resolution sponsored by Mayor Weber, Counselor Chavez, Counselor Merrill Worth, Counselor Cassett, and I also believe Counselor Lindell, although it is not listed in the caption, but it is on the on the resolution. It is a resolution relating to firearms, recognizing that certain city properties are used for school-related activities, which makes the carrying of a deadly weapon on such properties a fourth degree felony pursuant to NMSA 1978, section 30-7-2.1. I apologize, I am bad at reading captions this evening. And directing the city manager to work with staff to post notice on such facilities. Kira Cho is not here this evening, but we do have attorney, City Attorney Erin McSherry, as well as City Manager John Blair here to answer questions. So this item was postponed from our previous meeting and pulled onto discussion. Is there a number of questions? And I will go ahead and turn to the committee for whoever would like to get started. Counselor Michael Garcia.
Thank you. I guess I'll be the first up to bat. Last meeting, we, I think we had extensive discussion regarding the legal authority that the city has regarding the language currently in our state constitution, which clearly prohibits the city from regulating firearms. I know that there's been some communication sent to us earlier regarding that specific topic and I'm still trying to get my head wrapped around how the interpretation is that we are not regulating firearms because if you look up the definition of regulation, it talks about rulemaking and lawmaking and by proposal in front of us, I'm trying to understand how we are diverting from regulation. So I guess that's the first question I have for Madam City Attorney is the proposal in front of us, how is it not regulating firearms or deadly weapons?
Sure. Madam Chair Cassett and Counselor Garcia, if the government body wanted to regulate something, you would need to pass a bill. So the starting point is this is a resolution, so resolutions don't govern the public. So there's a state statute that already applies to these facilities. And the only thing the resolution does is identify the ones the council is aware of now and asks the city manager or directs the city manager to put up signage identifying those for the public so that they'll have a better idea. Because it's not clear when a public walks up to some of these buildings that they are used for public school sanctioned events. So the signage will just make that clear for the public.
So let me ask you a question. By putting, by installing a sign, isn't that making a rule saying such an item is prohibited?
Counselor Cassett, Chair Cassett, Counselor Garcia, no, it is not.
So.
The rule already exists.
No, no, I understand, but and so I guess let's, let's take two steps back because there, as you mentioned, there is already a state statute that allows for firearms to not, and I don't have language in front of me, I apologize, but it to the effects, it allows for certain spaces outside of public schools to prohibit firearms. And so.
Chair Cassett, Counselor Garcia, no, it already prohibits firearms.
Correct.
It doesn't allow them to be prohibited. It actually proactively prohibits them.
Correct. That's what I'm.
There's another statute that allows courts to prohibit firearms, which is different. It says courts may write a rule. In this case, it doesn't say cities may write a rule. It says they are prohibited.
Okay, but let's for now, let's focus not on the courts, let's focus on the current statute cited in the resolution, which is discussing schools and it says spaces and I apologize, I know I had it pulled up, but there is a law already on the books. And so my question is by us not taking, by us taking action proposed in the resolution, the way I interpret it is that we are now enforcing a law, which then dovetails into regulation. It's, you can't have one without the other. You can't, you can't install a sign, whether it's prohibiting firearms or saying no running near the pool because those become rules of the space. It's, it's, it sets the regulation of that space. So my question is, how are we? Why is it being defined or determined by, I'm assuming the city attorney's office, that installing a sign is not regulating? Because from all interpretation of what I've read of law, it is a form of regulation.
Chair Cassett, Counselor Garcia, I disagree with your premise. Putting up signs does not create law.
It creates rule.
I disagree with that premise absolutely. I don't know where you're getting that from. If you have anything that says that, I'd love to see it. That is not how law is created. Law is created by going through the public process. This law already is in existence. City manager could put up these signs now.
Okay, we're getting away from law. Let's focus on rule because regulation can be promoted by rule as well.
Okay, so Chair Cassett, Counselor Garcia, rules are a type of law. Law includes case law, statutes, US Constitution, New Mexico Constitution, the city charter, city ordinances, city regulations. Those are all types of law.
Right. And we're talking about rule here, not let's again, if there is, so let's pivot back to law. Because as I mentioned, there's already a law on the books that allows for this, that allows for, it's currently against the law. If we, let's hypothetically say there was a dance going on at the convention center is being utilized by the school or a debate, whatever it was, a school function. The way the current law works is that automatically becomes a gun-free zone. The way the current law sits, that automatically it becomes a gun-free zone. What we're proposing with this resolution is to take it an additional step. And the city began to regulate. They then, the city then takes that additional step. There's already a law in place. We've established that. You established it in the resolution. What the current resolution does, it takes it an additional step and it extends it and begins to regulate it. And as I mentioned in our last meeting, it's clearly defined in our state constitution that we don't have the authority to regulate. And I think that's where my concern is that we are heading down the wrong path because if we want to begin to regulate firearms, we should be aiming all of our energy effort resources to changing the law, not circumventing the law. Because I think what is going to happen, and it's proven with the Albuquerque citation you mentioned in your email, it will come to litigation. There will be litigation on this. And I think the, moving forward with the premise, well, then let's challenge us or, you know, with the unfortunate language that our mayor used in an email through his political action committee, let us get caught trying. That is the wrong type of mentality we should be having. We shouldn't be having the mentality of let us get trying to violate the state constitution. The mentality should be, how can we change the law to better protect our community? And I think that's the concern I have here is we are in some senses saying, take us to court. We'll fight it in court. And we'll have this never-ending battle. And who ultimately has to pay that? The taxpayers. And I think if we feel so strongly about this, let's change the law. Because I mentioned at our last committee meeting, and I will reiterate it again, one of our main priorities as a city government is to ensure every member of our community is safe. School-aged children, people that go to churches, people that go to restaurants, people that go to grocery stores, people that go to worship centers. Every single space where these mass shootings have happened, we need to ensure that they're safe spaces. That's where we should be focusing our energy and effort on. So I guess my next question is, since resolutions don't have the authority to carry out the enforcement of law, then, then what weight does this carry? Because as it's been mentioned by our office in the past, Madam City Attorney, resolutions can be dismissed by staff. Because ultimately it is the will of the governing body. It's the opinion of the governing body. And we are, through this resolution, we are saying we are going to enforce the law. And so I guess my question is, because this is a resolution and it's requesting that the law, the current law be enforced, how can that be?
Madam Chair, Counselor Garcia, I'm not aware of ever saying resolutions may be dismissed by staff. Let's start with that.
It's been stated by you and we had a long conversation in a prior governing body meeting about it. I remember.
A point of order. We do not, if the city attorney has stated that is not her viewpoint, that is within our rules of decorum, that we will not be, that that is, you cannot put on, if she is saying that that is not something that she says that you cannot be putting on her will or her opinion. So please let the city attorney state her own opinion.
And even if I don't set the record straight, please don't speak on my behalf.
Madam Chair, that is a statement that was made in the past. It was a discussion that was had in the past.
Madam Chair, members, the rules of decorum do require that you speak on your own behalf, not on anyone else's behalf.
Madam Chair, then what I will do is I will refer back to minutes and where it's stated by the city attorney.
Moving on, City Attorney McSherry, please answer the, if you can, please answer the question.
Going back to the beginning of this statement that resulted in the question, resolution does not take any steps to regulate at all. Is not requesting anything. It's directing the city manager, which is perfectly within the authority of the governing body and is often what you do in a resolution.
It's asking the city manager to enforce the law, the current state statute.
The enforcement of the current state statute would be done by the police. And it can already be done by the police and it is not saying anything about the police in this resolution.
It's reinforcing a state law by installing signage.
Madam Chair, Counselor Garcia, I disagree.
So you're saying a sign does not reinforce the state law?
I don't know what you mean by that. I got.
By installing a sign notifying the public, whether it's this instance of no guns or a speed limit sign, you're saying a sign does not reinforce the law?
Chairwoman Cassett, Counselor Garcia, that is not a term of art. I don't know what you're talking about.
Does a speed limit sign reinforce the speed limit?
I don't know what you mean by that. It certainly announces it. Certainly alerts the public to the existing law.
Okay, well, I think again, this dancing around is, it's again, it's showing the public that we are doing everything we can to manipulate our legal process and our legal system to enforce a current standing law. So that to me is very concerning, some of the statements you just made.
Chair Cassett, Counselor Garcia, placing motivations is also a violation of our rules of decorum.
What motivations am I?
Manipulation.
What manipulation?
I don't know what manipulation you're talking about, but you're saying that someone is trying to manipulate something that is placing a motive on someone who is not here.
And you explained, I'm not, I would like to.
Are you saying that you're trying to manipulate something?
No.
Okay, then so you're saying someone else is trying to manipulate.
No, can you clarify? Because I don't believe manipulation was part of this conversation.
You used the word.
I believe the inference that this resolution, that the motivation behind this resolution is to manipulate the law, which it is not the motivation of the sponsors of this resolution to manipulate the law. So I think that is the inference. Now you may say that you feel that this is a manipulation of the law, but it is the inference that that is what the intention behind the resolution is. Is my understanding if I am providing clarification.
Madam Chair, that's correct. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. I believe the intentions on my own behalf are not in alignment with the way our law currently sits. My next question is, given the severity of this in the sense that it does seem to violate our state constitution, why would we not seek the opinion of our Attorney General on such a matter?
Madam Chair, Counselor Garcia, I again disagree with your premise. I see no reason why this has any relationship with the ban on municipalities regulating firearms.
I think a lot of our public seems to have a different opinion and I think just as a sign of good governance, that we would reach out to our Attorney General to seek if we have such authorities and why are we not doing so?
Madam Chair, Counselor Garcia, so we're not trying to use any authority whatsoever.
We're trying to install signs, are we not?
Madam Chair, Counselor Garcia, we were allowed to install signs.
Why are we not seeking the opinion of the Attorney General on the matter?
Madam Chair, Counselor Garcia, because there is not really a legal question here.
There is a legal question. Are we within the bounds of our state constitution and our rights as a municipality?
Madam Chair, Counselor Garcia, if you'd like to pass a resolution to ask for a legal opinion from someone outside the city, it's entirely within your power to do so.
Sure. Okay. And so I guess the last question I've got for us is have we discussed any of this with Santa Fe Public Schools? Have we entered into any discussions with them regarding this matter?
Chair Cassett, Counselor Garcia, many of the locations where Santa Fe Public School activities occur are certainly in discussion with Santa Fe Public Schools. Is that what you're asking?
I'm asking, have we begun discussions with Santa Fe Public Schools regarding this proposal?
Counselor Cassett, Chair Cassett, Counselor Garcia, I don't know who the we is in your sentence. I reviewed the legislation for legal sufficiency. I have not done that.
As anybody from the city.
Chair Cassett, Counselor Garcia, I can only speak on my own behalf. And there was nothing related to legal sufficiency that relates to your question.
Okay, has any of the sponsors spoken with Santa Fe Public Schools?
Okay. I have not, no. As a cosponsor, I have not, and I have not been informed of any other, whether or not any other sponsors had that conversation.
I have not had that conversation. It's a state statute that public schools and schools use or utilize to keep students safe. It seems straightforward in the sense that if students of schools are present, that they would follow that state statute and it would be helpful for both of those that may carry firearms and those that are parents of students or community members to know which buildings are being utilized by schools and why the state statute is being practiced within that or being aware that it would apply to them. But I haven't had a direct conversation with anyone at Santa Fe Public Schools.
Okay, thank you for the clarification, Counselor. I think they would be a major stakeholder in this process, given it's their students we're trying to protect with this resolution. And I would, and I would think that we would be collaboratively working with them to identify the various locations. So given the statements made, I'm concerned regarding the identified locations that are in the current resolution through the FIR. It allows for many more locations to identify, be identified through the purchase of the signs. I would think that we would be working directly with the public school system to identify those locations, the most in need locations, and to hear that we're not working with a major stakeholder. I'm very disappointed in that. I think it again shows we're acting on our own. We're acting on our own kind of virtue mission. We're we're not really trying to tackle the biggest challenge in front of us, which is ensuring our community is safe. And it's very disappointing. I think that and I'll reiterate again, we as a government need to be doing everything we can to ensure our community is safe from gun violence. It is our priority. I just would like for us to do it in a manner that is in alignment with our state constitution, that is in alignment with the needs of our holistic community. I mean, if you think about the biggest mass shooting that just recently happened, it was at a nightclub. What are we doing to protect folks at nightclubs here? Some of our other recent mass shootings were at at grocery store, convenience store locations, like Walmart locations. And I think that's where we need to be working with the community to ensure as somebody steps out in public, we're doing everything we can to keep them safe. And given that there is already, it's established that there is already a law on the books that is protecting these young folks in these spaces, it's already on the books. These signs aren't implementing new laws. It's installing a sign reinforcing a current law on the book, which in my opinion is a form of regulation, which then in turn violates our state constitution. So I think time and energy needs to be spent in a manner that is going to be, lead to better outcomes and safer outcomes for our community. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Chavez.
Thank you, Chair. So I agree with Counselor Garcia on the fact that we probably have to do more to protect our entire community. But I do want to say that when we know that there is a state statute in place and that we have schools, school districts, because I also consider private schools, charter schools and public schools when we're looking at this state statute. When we know that they're in partnership with us within our facilities and this statute exists, that it is our responsibility to properly identify the buildings that they utilize so that communication of enforcement is clear when we're talking about transparency to both the community, both, well, both those that are using the facility, but the community that surrounds it. So I actually think if we're talking about transparency in that partnership and our responsibility in enforcing the state statute, that this is an appropriate step. What I did want to say is I know that all of the partnerships or utilization of facilities by any of our school districts within Santa Fe, the city manager is probably very well aware of as it's a partnership within the department. So I imagine as those partnerships are developed with those departments, that is how buildings, well, no buildings will be utilized. It is a school sanctioned. The statute says school sanctioned activities, so it would have to be some type of partnership with the city. So whether it's used for a school sanctioned team, a school sanctioned dance, a school sanctioned internship program, anything that is school sanctioned, all of that would have to go through the city. That partnership would be known. I'm sure there would be different JPAs and all of those things that solidify that partnership. So I think keeping track of the buildings that we're, that our youth are utilizing is quite easy. Is that accurate, City Manager?
Can I just make one clarification? It's sanctioned and related, so it is a little bit broader than sanctioned. I think a lot of the places listed are ones where there's sanctioned as well as related. But it is a little bit broader than that as well.
So with the ones that aren't sanctioned, then how, what would be the process in identifying those facilities?
So for example, one of the, one of the listed, and I think the only one that's maybe related rather than sanctioned is the Mayor's Youth Advisory Board in the current resolution. And they have had agenda items related to school, the school, the schools in the city. So that would be the relationship there. I think the rest of the listed facilities do have sanctioned activities where it's, you know, an actual team or field trip, that type of thing.
So I just wanted to emphasize that there is a process in identifying the buildings that or facilities that will be used by youth. I also wanted to just solidify the fact that in talking about transparency, I think that this is just a form of it. There are facilities, city facilities, that there will not be regulation or rules because it doesn't apply to the state statute that we're just trying to enforce. And so I just wanted, like, we're not coming up with any new rules on our own. It's literally communication to the community that there's a reason why there, the state statute would be enforced specifically within that certain facility. Is that accurate?
Chair Cassett, Counselor Chavez, yes, I think that's accurate.
Thank you.
Counselor Lee Garcia?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I thank you for the dialogue that has just taken place because it obviously brings forth my question as to if we were to pass this resolution and once signs are put up, how is it enforced? How, is this something, is it enforced by us? What is our intent? We're obviously trying to keep people safe, but. Uh, what is our intent? Is, uh, we're obviously trying to keep people safe, but how is it enforced and how is it gonna make people safer? That's what I want to know.
Um, Madam Chair, Counselor Garcia, thank you for the question. Uh, our police department would enforce it just as they would tonight. If there were an issue tonight where someone took a gun onto one of these properties and someone called the police and said, I believe someone's brought a gun to the property, our law enforcement would go out and they would enforce it.
Um, given that, uh, that answer, unless you have a police officer or somebody on premises, the response time to somebody with a gun not necessarily be enough time to save people is the case. It's just my own common sense thought process. Um, because posting the sign and, and doing these things, and again, I, I guess I'm alluding back to uh, do we have the legal authority to do this? Well, based upon city attorney's response earlier says we do. Um, I think that may be based upon your opinion. And interpretation of the law. And so, uh, I'm not a lawyer, so I can't speak to that. I mean, uh, both of you are lawyers. And so I can appreciate that. However, I come to looking at a resolution such as this in regards to is this really gonna make an impact and is it gonna keep people safe? Do we have the legal authority to do this and how is it gonna work to keep people safe? And I think I brought this up at the last Quality of Life meeting. Is that when a person with ill intent is gonna enter a room, a convention center, a council chamber, I don't think there's anything that's gonna stop them from doing what they're gonna do. Sign's not gonna do it. Um, I know that our intent here is to keep people safe. And yet I don't know that this is something that is gonna keep people safe. I think that this is my, uh, my thought process with this is what you are doing and what we are doing. And, and again, we're notifying people that they should know, if you're, if you're a gun owner, you should know that if you're gonna be in an area where students are and it's a school sanctioned activity, that if you are caught with a firearm or a deadly weapon, whatever definition of a deadly weapon is, is stated, you are susceptible to a fourth degree felony. And I would assume that most gun owners know this. Okay, um. Will a sign make them think, oh, I'm sorry, I have a concealed carry. I'm not gonna take my firearm into this facility. I, I don't know that. Um. And so, you know, going back to do we have the legal authority to do this? Um, and is it gonna work or are we just spinning our wheels here? Because we could be spending, using, utilizing a lot more of our very precious time and wonderful minds into making our city better. And I think that's the direction that I take with this resolution. Um, I don't, uh, I don't want to challenge somebody's legal opinion. But I think that we really do have to take our state constitution, our statutes and the laws that are already on the books, um. And, uh, I don't know that this resolution really solves any of that. Not to mention it opens up us, opens a us as a city up to possibly litigation from somebody who may get caught in an unintended, unintended consequences for breaking this rule, whatever it may be.
Madam Chair, Counselor Garcia, if I can answer or respond to a few things there. Um, first, it would be that we feel quite confident in the legal standing of the city. Um, the city of Albuquerque has already taken this step. We're not aware of any litigation or anyone suing the city of Albuquerque or taking them to court for this. And so we feel very confident about the standing that we have with regard to the legal authority. Um, there is no number of total laws that the city council could pass to keep people from committing crimes. There are bad people in this world who, no matter how many laws against murder or rape or DWI or domestic violence, people are still gonna do evil things. That's no reason for us to sort of say, well, why don't we, why do we have murder laws? People are gonna still murder. I mean, if we can't, you know, um, you know, I don't know that we'd suggest that we take down all of the speed limit signs in Santa Fe. Well, people should know if they speed, they're, you know, guilty of committing a crime. Um, and I think, you know, I appreciate what Counselor Garcia said earlier. There's a whole totality of things that this governing body and that our state legislators and the Congress should be doing to protect people from, um, gun violence. This is one of those. And we're excited at the opportunity, I think, to work with all of you to look for more. Um, but I think that, um, we view this as something that the city can do legally with the authority that we have. And it's a step that's not in violation of the law. But it's also not where we're gonna stop. This is one of many things to do. But I don't, I'm, I'm reluctant to sort of suggest that somehow a sign is gonna stop a crime. It's not. Uh, passing a law doesn't stop crime either. But that doesn't keep us from doing all that we can to try to protect our community. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Blair. Um. Yeah, I still, um, I go back to through this resolution, how do we expect for it to actually make us safer? And I think this is in this, in essence, not something that will help. I, I really feel that, um, uh, if we go back to, um, our legislatures, our state constitutions and, and we, and we really look at how we can strengthen, um. I guess good legislation is not necessarily um, what I wanted to, to say, but at the same time, I think that there are smart ways to go about this and I don't, I don't think that doing a resolution that, uh, um, what signs up is gonna help. And that's just where I stand. And so I appreciate, um, all the work that's been done on this, um, and I'll, uh, I'll yield the floor.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Vidriya?
Thank you, Madam Chair. In the last, um, Quality of Life meeting, I was just trying to wrap my head around how, um, how we would institute signage and if it's permanent. Because some of these events are, um, are sanctioned, school sanctioned events are not always in the same place. They're also, um, like facilities for school interns. We were talking about how not all school interns are in every single, um, we need, sorry, city facility. So I was wanting to understand more about, are these permanent signs or do we are we, are we utilizing signs when there's a specific event, um, sanctioned event at a city property?
Um, Chair Cassidy, Counselor Vidriya, thanks for the question. Um, the language is when there be, when the facilities are, or, um, outdoor areas. Exact language, but, um, are being used and the same language is used for um, school facilities being operated by the school board. Um, so that being is there for both of them. It seems to suggest that, you know, during the time period that there, there's an ongoing use. Um, so certainly if we knew a facility was no longer being used for a school sanctioned or school related event, um, I would recommend to the city manager that he takes down the sign. Um, but I don't think it's, you know, the, the intern has entered and a sign goes up. I don't think that's the intent of the statute. That doesn't make any sense. Just like it's not, the students are currently being, or the facility is currently being operated by the school board. They're in session. Um, that's how the language reads for other school facilities. Um, that, that's not a reasonable way to read that statute. Um, so certainly if we knew that we were no longer gonna have interns in a certain building and that was the only school sanctioned event or school related event, then that sign probably should come down. Um, you know, for right now, we have interns uh, on a regular basis in both city hall and the municipal court that I'm aware of, and I think many other um, city facilities as well. Um, but those, that's what we'd need to be able to identify. Is, is this an ongoing use? So then it makes sense to keep this, the sign up. Um, if it's something we know is gonna stop and it's not an ongoing use, then it wouldn't make sense to have a sign there. The ones that are listed are ones that we, we believe are ongoing uses or facilities. Nope. Um, but if, uh, but if that changed, then, then certainly it wouldn't make sense to keep a sign up. I think the resolution recognizes that these are ones we're aware of at this, at this time. Um, but that certainly could change.
Thank, thank you for that clarification. You know, part of a lot of our resolutions are very symbolic. We've said that before. Um, there is symbolic notion with this resolution about um, ways we can try to keep young people safe. Not foolproof. Um, I certainly don't think that by people having guns, um, it makes everyone safer. As we saw in Uvalde, there was a ton of people that had guns and nothing got a lot of people die, a lot of young people died. So to me, having guns, even law abiding people don't necessarily make us safer. So having more gun free zones, um. In this case, I think it's because it's a resolution, it is symbolic. I, I am of the mindset though, that we should be trying everything possible to provide, to have our youth feel like if they're gonna be in city um, facilities and it's a ci, uh, school sanctioned activity or event, that they've um, can feel safe. Knowing that that's prohibited at the, at that moment, so um, you know, I think we should we should try something different. And this is something different. You know, I'm, I'm not an attorney, so I'm relying on you all to, to really like look at all the facets of this, um, resolution. So I, I mean, that's really kind of where I stand. It may not solve everything, but I, I'm willing to try. And I think, you know, being in a situation, none of you were there. Um, when we were, and this won't solve this issue because it's related to school and youth. But we had someone that was very threatening here in the council chambers um, with the gun. And that was terrifying because we really couldn't do anything about it. And that person knew that. And they just were provoking us because they knew they could be here. That should never be the case. And I hope that we can change that at the state lo, state level because I feel like there's times that we are kind of right out here in the open, so. Um, I think those are all the questions I had, um, from the last meeting and I will yield the floor. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilwoman. Um, I'm kind of, kind of following up a little bit on, on what you were just saying is, is, uh, uh, the complexity of this issue, um, and how and to what city manager Blair was saying that, that there are a number of situations of concerns of, of causes and effects of gun violence that this will not impact. Um, that we do not have the legal authority to impact. Um, and, and I think that it's important that we remember that this is a, a yes and situation. So we can do this, yes, and we can also lobby the state and lobby the federal government to make changes. Um, but, but I do think it is important that we, we look at, you know, the concept of how we challenge existing law. I mean, because that, it, it is such, it's such an interesting conversation. I remember this was actually one that came up during one of our forums, uh, at the last uh, when, when I was running for the first time and you're running for reelection. It was this concept of, of these resolutions and, you know, do they take up too much time and and really this idea about what are the tools that we have to challenge existing laws that we would like change, that we maybe don't, um, we don't have the power to, to change them and, and what, what are those avenues to challenge them? Um, and while we are not, actually in this one, we're actually not challenging an existing law. On this one, we are, we are simply saying this law, this existing law is applicable to this scenario and, um, you know, we, we, I'm putting up those signs, but, but I do think I, I would be curious to hear a little bit more from the perspective, maybe the city attorney or city manager about uh, some of the different roles that we have at our fingertips for, for challenging existing law and, um, but a, and kind of as we continue, as city manager Blair mentioned, you know, this is one of many things that we will continue to look at and, and really what that conversation starts to look like from here on out.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate that. First of all, if I can quickly apologize to all of you sitting at the dais. I'm obsessively checking my phone because I'm trying to monitor the power outage that's still going on in the city right now. We're down to 2,000 customers that don't have power, so we're getting, we're getting there. Um, Counselor, I appreciate that question. You know, I, I, I think unfortunately, having to challenge existing laws has been fundamental to the notion of advancing civil rights in the country and advancing public policy. And we don't always have the opportunity just to follow the law. And I think, looking back even to the last 100 years, challenging existing laws helped us overturn segregation. It helped us get the right for interracial marriage. It got the right for contraception for anyone. It got the right for choice, for bodily autonomy for a while. Challenging existing laws allowed for queer people like me to get married. And so it's not the easiest path, but often it is fundamental to the things that we care most about to challenge laws that we don't agree with. Um, I think we all know I'm talking about when I say sometimes we have to get into a little bit of good trouble. And that's the notion of what's the case here is if we feel as strong as we do about the epidemic of gun violence in this country, that we now have data that shows that children are more likely to die from guns than any other way to die. That we know in New Mexico, it is the third leading cause of death among children. If we fundamentally care, we are gonna take every opportunity and every action that we can to both put forward laws that we know we have the legal authority to pass, like the one that we're working on now, that we also take the steps on behalf of our residents to challenge the laws that we don't agree with. Uh, defer to the city attorney if she has something else to add.
Thank you, Chair Cassidy. Um, in this case, I think you're talking about the constitutional limitation. Um, at least that, that would be the primary limitation on municipalities and other local governments in, in the state of New Mexico. Um, but then there's also constitutional issues at the federal level. We just had some recent um, case law come out of the US Supreme Court within the last six months. Um, so, um, you, I think those each have different potential strategies, so um, certainly the municipality can advocate a change to the constitution in New Mexico. You know, that wasn't the original language in the state's constitution. Um, and in fact, there's some really interesting history of the state in terms of gun regulation that existed before we became a state. Um, so that's all very interesting to look at and, and I think that's in probably the lowest hanging fruit for local governments in New Mexico would be to look at a change to the New Mexico constitution. Um, then beyond that, there's potentially a lot that could be done at the federal level, but probably we would need much more than just the municipality. But I think the municipality could be very key in the New Mexico conversation.
Thank you so much for both of you for that, that response, because I know there is a lot of this, this interest in how do we keep our community safe. Um, and, and, you know, this, this committee, we could have a, a vast conversation about the many different avenues by which both we would pursue, uh, whether it be policy changes, access to mental health care, opportunities for youth education. You know, we really, this, this is such a, um, broad topic. And I think one of the, one of the challenges that we often run into in discussing um, guns in America is that we, we kind of start to pigeonhole ourself of like, well, no, we have to, this is the way to go and this is the way to go. And again, this is, this is a yes and, um. And I think that it is important that we look at this from all the, the various facets that, that we need to move. Getting out of the philosophical conversation, just, uh, putting facts back on the ground. Um, per the information provided to us by the city attorney currently and, and the city manager currently, this law is applicable to many of our city facilities and could be enforced right now. Um, correct?
Chair Cassidy, that's correct.
By posting the signage, it simply alerts members of the public that in this building, because of course with gun laws, you know, with, with other things, you know, you, you cannot rape anybody anywhere. Um, gun laws are a little bit different. There are specific sites and so there could be, um, this really does provide the opportunity to the public that this is one of those sites that is applicable, that this law is applicable, correct?
Chair Cassidy, that's correct.
Thank you. I think that's a really important piece. Um, and I think that it is also important that we talk about um, you know, the, the variety of gun owners frequently when we're talking about Frequently when we're talking about gun restrictions, we're really thinking about individuals who, the conversation starts to move towards people that have ill intent. There are many law-abiding gun owners that may not be aware that these are city facilities. And that, correct me if I'm wrong, city attorney, it would not be a defense if they were to receive a fourth degree felony charge that they were unaware that this law was applicable. Is that, would that be accurate?
Chair Cassett, are you saying it's successful defense or?
Well, I guess it depends on the judge, doesn't it?
I'm not sure if that's been tried. I have not researched that angle, but generally knowledge of a law does not provide a defense.
Okay.
That is accurate.
Okay. So this does provide opportunity for law-abiding gun owners, which the vast majority of them are, to know when they are entering a facility where they cannot be carrying a weapon and thereby not be charged with a fourth degree felony and simply because they weren't unaware that this is a place that the law applies. I'm just making statements. Is there anything I said in there that was incorrect? I see you, I see you processing.
I'm not sure I got the question.
Madam Chair, I think if I understand your question correctly, I think that we view the signs as a helpful tool for law-abiding gun citizens or law-abiding citizens who own guns to know, hey, I shouldn't bring my gun into this facility because I, and I appreciate being told.
Thank you. I also want to remind, you know, members of the governing body that, that again, when we think about gun violence and we think about gun deaths, we often think about people who have ill intent. A lot of gun deaths, especially in children, is accidental. And so children getting a hold of guns and you know, shooting them and accidentally killing themselves or killing others is something that happens very frequently. And as, you know, in a lot of these facilities, we have young kids. We have young kids who do not know. We have young kids who see access to toy guns all the time, who have water guns, who have other types of guns that they may very well shoot. And so making sure that, I also see this as another aspect of that protection piece of that, how do we keep our community safe? This is a component of gun death and gun injury that we need to remember. And, and hopefully somebody is being responsible with their guns. But not everybody is. And, and could, it could be left out in a place where a student or a young child, they're often one and the same, could in fact access the gun and, and we could have an accidental gun death. So I think that that is another piece that as we're thinking about this holistically, the concept of mass shootings is something that we, you know, we're inundated with all the time of, you know, these purposeful violent acts that we sometimes forget that accidents happen. And, and that is something that we do want to protect our youth against developmentally. Their frontal cortex just isn't quite online yet. They sometimes don't do the most intelligent and safest things. So, so I think that that is another aspect here that as we're thinking about the variety of different ways that gun injury can happen, that it is not just, not just about intentional shooting. And one of the reasons why we want to keep guns away from children is simply because children, you know, there's a reason we don't let them drive cars as well. It's just, it's not safe. It is not something that they should really have access to. So I see that as another reason why this is something that we should be pursuing. I think, I think that's about it. The main thing is that, you know, there really isn't, this is already enforceable. This is simply alerting individuals to a law that is already applicable in these buildings because of the, the school activities that do occur in these buildings. And for that reason, I am supportive of both moving forward with this resolution to provide that information to the public that these are gun-free zones, as well as how we continue to look at opportunities on the local level to prevent gun violence. And again, that may not be specific gun laws. It may be all of the different related factors that come into play here, as well as working with the state and federal delegations to look at both specific gun laws as well as the, the related issues of how we support a, a, a safe community, a safe country, and really understanding that these are complex issues. And I really, I really want to make sure that, that we don't forget that, you know, most gun owners are law-abiding citizens and really giving them the opportunity to know where, where the law applies is important. So that is all. If there are any other questions, comments from the committee or is there a motion from the committee? Oh, Counselor Lee Garcia.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So did we establish when, so through this resolution, signs will be put up only when student activity or school sanctioned activities are taking place? Or and then taken down or some other form of signage that would be a, I guess to the verbiage that only while school activities are on premises will this will apply, something to that statement?
Chair Cassett, Councilor Garcia, this resolution does, does not say that, but neither does the statute. The statute gives two, two categories. And it's when, it's when the facility that are being operated by the school board and when they're being used for school sanctioned or school-related activities. So what that seems to be saying is during the time period, meaning days, weeks, years, those facilities are being used for those reasons, that that's when guns are not allowed in those facilities. That's seems to be the reasonable reading of that. So certainly, I think this was a question earlier. If we knew or when we know that there's no longer those types of activities in a particular facility, that seems like that would be the time to take the sign down.
Thank you. And one last question, I guess for you, since you are the city attorney. This does not go against the legal right of a gun owner to have a firearm on a, on city property when there is not school sanctioned activities. I don't know if I worded that.
Chair Cassett, Councilor Garcia. I don't think there is enough. So there's the, the context of when the activities are occurring is not part of the statute. It's facilities in which those types of activities are occurring essentially. So it doesn't say when they are occurring and only during the hours they are occurring or anything like that. There's nothing like that in the statute.
All right, I have no further questions. Thank you.
Counselor Michael Garcia.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Reading the statute, it says, "Any other public buildings or grounds, including playing fields and parking areas that are not public school property in or on which public school-related and sanctioning activities are being performed." So to get back to Counselor Garcia's question, the law would only apply on or which public-related, when, on or which school-related sanction activities are being performed. I think it would be hard to put timeframes. And so I guess maybe a question, City Manager Blair, have we determined what the signs look like?
Madam Chair, Counselor Garcia, we have not begun to work on that. I think we're waiting for the resolution to pass before we begin to do that.
Okay. Because I mean, I would strongly encourage if we move forward with this, that that language be incorporated into the signage. That way it's clear as day that these become gun-free zones, according to the state statute, when these sanctioned activities are being performed. And because I, I think because of the flux influx of activities that take place and sometimes aren't taking place, or the common citizen to understand when and when not, or just see the signage, I think we need to be more clear regards, regarding the intention of the resolution based off of the current state statute. Because if that's the grounds we're utilizing to move forward, I want to make sure that we're not putting ourselves in a situation where, as Councilwoman Vidal had said, during a city council meeting, it's not a school-related event unless we're giving a presentation to championship soccer team or whatnot. And individual does then have that right. And I think this is again, where I think a little more needs to be refined out should we be moving forward with this based off of the current laws that sits in the way we're interpreting it and, and moving forward with this. Thank you, Madam Chair.
City Attorney, did you have, I can't tell if that's a response face or not. Would you like to respond or no?
Chair Cassett, Councilors, I would just say that the, both categories, schools themselves, both use the term being, neither says when those are occurring. So for schools themselves, operative verb is being as well. And those schools are not always being operated under the supervision of a local school board. But I believe the intent of the statute is that guns are not allowed in schools.
Thank you. If there are no other questions or comments, what is the will of the committee?
Move to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. Can I please have a roll call vote?
Counselor Garcia, or I mean, Counselor Chavez, excuse me.
Yes.
Counselor Lee Garcia.
No.
Counselor Michael Garcia.
Upstanding.
Counselor Renee Villarreal.
Yes.
Chair Cassett.
Yes, and Counselor Garcia, you can explain your vote normally, say it out loud.
Sorry.
I will, I will grant you.
I apologize.
He whispered it to me, so I heard.
Motion passes.
Thank you, thank you for that. And, and I, you know, my, my no to this is not in any means whatsoever thinking that I, I don't want to keep somebody safe. I just don't think this is the way they do it. And it's not really going to make any impact on that. I, I do believe that there are steps that need to be done, that needs to be taken to help to make our society safer. And that I believe comes in the form of a conversation that happens around the kitchen table, conversation that happens around groups of people. And I think that because I believe that this is not something that would be able to be, I, I, I do believe it goes against the, the constitution and law. And that, those are my feelings. And so that was the reason for my no vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Okay, moving along, any matters from staff this evening?
I have no matters, no matters, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Rich, do you have any?
No matters from staff.
Any matters for members of the committee? None? All right, no matters from me. Our next meeting will be Wednesday, January 18th at 7:44 PM. We are adjourned.